Welcome to those just joining us. We're expecting up to ninety people tonight, so I invite us all to be on mute. If you have any trouble, I may help you out and put you on mute while we're now with the capable hands in need of our general minister.
Thank you so much, Yvonne, and welcome to all of you to the 2024 Town Hall Series. As you know, the General Assembly voted in July of 2023 to approve a resolution which included important changes to the design. And we're going to talk about that tonight, and we're also going to talk about the work that the implementation team has done so far. I am your General Minister President, Terry Hord Owens. Joining me tonight to lead this conversation also is the moderator of the General Assembly, Elder Clyde Hunt. The Chair of the Implementation Team, Reverend Belva Brown Jordan, is traveling and not with us today, as is the Chair of the Governance Committee of the General Board, Reverend Bill Spangler-Dunning, who is the Regional Minister in Virginia. So Clyde and I are holding it down tonight, and we're here to share some information and to answer your questions. It had, it is being recorded and has, as has been our practice, any questions that you have, please put them in the chat as we go along. We're going to try to get through and then answer questions toward the end. So please put your questions in the chat. Yvonne will be moderating that Q and A period, but we don't want to lose your questions. And we are updating our FAQ page on the, on the face, on the website as we go through this process. So let's begin. We have chosen to begin, almost as a way of prayer and affirming our faith, to read together the preamble to the Design of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. So if you will join me, keep your mics on mute as we do this. We're going to go through all of the changes, but first we want to begin with the preamble. We'll review GA 2343, and then we'll talk about the implementations, recommendations that have come from the implementation team so far. So let's read together. "As members of the Christian Church, we confess that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of the living God, and proclaim Him Lord and Savior of the world. In Christ's name and by His grace, we accept our mission of witness and service to all people. We rejoice in God, Maker of heaven and earth, and in God's covenant of love, which binds us to God and to one another. Through baptism into Christ, we enter into newness of life and are made one with the whole people of God. In the communion of the Holy Spirit, we are joined together in discipleship and in obedience to Christ. At the table of the Lord, we celebrate with thanksgiving, the saving acts and presence of Christ. Within the universal church, we receive the gift of ministry and the light of Scripture. In the bonds of Christian faith, we yield ourselves to God, that we may serve the One whose kingdom has no end. Blessing, glory, and honor be to God forever. Amen. Amen." It does capture our core affirmation of faith, and it provides a foundation for our mission in the world and has grounded the work that we have done as we've considered how we need to show up as a new church in a new world. Let's talk briefly about Resolution GA 2343. The General Assembly gathered in Louisville. Many of you may have been there, and we passed this resolution amendments to Design of the Christian Church. And I want to read this because it's important. "The Governance Committee having discerned a need for the Church to reexamine our understanding of God's covenant with us and God Disciples' covenant with one another, and considering unprecedented challenges facing the whole Church. And whereas the whole Church has been given important work to do, we are called by God to make disciples of Jesus Christ, to equip disciples to work from their spiritual gifts, to coordinate that work more effectively, be faithful stewards of our resources, and whereas we want all expressions of the Church to be more connected to each other and to have more of a voice in the present and future of the Church." And the next slide there? That slide that I just read really talks about the why. The goal here, as I said, it's really about the people in our pews. We all serve in lots of different ministries, but the congregations form the core of how we're organized as a church, and it's from congregations that many of our people have standing or ordained, do their work in our communities. So it's really about us being a more connected church, congregations, regions, and general expression. Throughout that structure of the Church, we have various forms of ministry that are supported through our regions and our general ministries, but it's that sense of connection that really is our why in terms of what is really leading us to make these changes. And bear in mind, the General Assembly has approved these changes. Our work has simply been to come up with an implementation plan. So let's talk about the changes. The General Assembly, in essence, will always be in session, not just a once every three-year event. The cycle will be every three years instead of every two, a triennial session. An annual session will convene at least once a year online. It won't replicate an in-person GA, so don't think of the online sessions as taking those five days of activities in person and putting them online. It will be a very different event focused on education, discussion, and discernment. Congregational representatives or delegates will serve for three-year cycles across from one GA to the next in-person event. And the General Assembly continues to provide ongoing input because of our ability to meet and greet more frequently into the various ministry priorities. When you think about the economic burden of attending a General Assembly, what that has meant is that fewer and fewer congregations are able to send delegates to attend, and as such, fewer people are actually able to participate in the important discernment and decision-making in the life of the Church by allowing for a hybrid and online capability. So even at the triennial event, there will be a hybrid capability. Every year we'll meet digitally and try to use that time not just to vote up and down on things, but to really listen, learn, discern, and then finally decide. The General Board functions as a working board now under these changes, and it actively works to fulfill the mission of the Church. The Design calls the General Board a smaller deliberative body that's guided by the priorities of the General Assembly. There will be working board committees that do a lot of work in between the plenaries. It will meet more than once a year, at least twice a year, one in person and one virtual. And the members will be nominated by the General Nominating Committee to serve a six-year term, and there will be a more open process for disciples to submit recommendation to nominate members of the General Board. We're moving away from a system where each region sent a representative, each general ministry sent a representative, and they were seventeen at-large representatives. So those are the big highlights of the changes that we're looking at. And we'll go into a little bit more detail about those a little later. So I'll turn it over to Clyde.
Thank you, Terry. So the members of the implementation team were appointed and approved by the Administrative Committee. They, as you can see, come from different expressions of the Church, from different geographic areas, and they bring a whole wide range of spiritual gifts to our work together. The implementation team meets once a month as a whole group, but twice a month in task groups. They're working groups that include persons beyond the core team. So as you can see, the members of the implementation team, Hyatt Allen, Oscar Banks, Jeff Schimpel, Bill Spangler-Dunning, Yvonne Gilmore, Cindy Kim Hanks, Eli John, Belva Brown Jordan. Belva serves as the Chair of the Implementation Team, and of course, our former moderator, our GMP, Terry Hord Owens, Evangelina Perez, Tamara Roddenberg, Allison Brewer, Diane Watkins, Crystal Williams, and of course, I serve on the implementation team and have the pleasure of serving as the moderator. So what you see before you is the timeline, the, and it also shows the progress of the implementation team. In September of 2023, from September to October, time was spent to recruit the team and to establish the timeline. Once the team was formed, of course, that report went to the Administrative Committee in October of last year, and then we thought it was very important to have listening sessions. So you can see there in November of 2023, hosted listening sessions and conversations with church leaders. Then in December, from listening and having those sessions, we were able to form our task groups and of course, created and assigned the tasks that would be needed in order to move forward in this progress. In January, we had a retreat, I believe it was in Indiana, January 20th of '24 this year. And then in April, we were able to provide a preliminary report to the Administrative Committee and the General Board. And then in May is when we started hosting our listening sessions and conversations with the Council of General Ministries and the College of Regional Ministers. And of course, the sessions that we're having now will continue for the next couple of months.
Sorry, had to unmute myself. Pay attention to this slide, the General Assembly. Did you know that the General Assembly is not just an event? The General Assembly is actually our Church. That is who we are as the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. We are the General Assembly. This is our official name and identity as a denomination, the General Assembly of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ. Going forward, we will basically have, and I think this chart does a wonderful job of kind of highlighting the various ways in which disciples will be able to participate in all sessions of the General Assembly. We're the only mainline denomination that actually allows representation from each of our congregations at the topmost level of decision-making in the Church, which is the General Assembly. Currently, we meet every two years. After 2025, we'll be meeting every three years. But look at, look at the ways in which people will be able to be engaged. For our triennial session, let's look all the way to the right. It will really be a hybrid. You could attend in person. You would have personal devices that will be able to connect to a live feed of the Assembly, and we're hoping that envisioning that local congregations will be able to have local communal gatherings. Churches that have the Wi-Fi broadband capability, maybe projection screen, to be able to stream not only worship, but also the business sessions and even some workshops, so that wherever we are, particularly in the business session, that if you're participating digitally, even when we're gathered in person, you always have access to a mic so that you can speak, and you, those of you who would have voting privileges will have the ability to vote. In our annual sessions, those will be online, and again, individual digital connections, but also local communal gatherings where you might be able to hear and respond to information that's shared with you. You would still be able to speak and share feedback, ask questions, and engage with the conversation from your local community. We know that there are lots of churches that have that kind of physical plant where they could host that. We also know there are lots of individuals who live in remote areas where the Wi-Fi is not strong. Depending upon whether you were born a digital native and how much technology you're used to using, you might not feel as comfortable trying to log on yourself. But perhaps there's a local congregation where you could go and participate in the meeting of the General Assembly. Voting delegates are not the only people who will be attending meetings at the General Assembly. Every member of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ will be invited to listen and hear and participate in conversation. We'll have, we'll still have the leaders of our regional ministries and the leaders of our general ministries there. So participation will be expanded by adopting these hybrid modes and ensuring that we're not just meeting every two years, but we're meeting literally every year and creating different kinds of events to do the work of the Church, giving ourselves more time for education and conversation. Let's get to that. One of the questions that was raised last year as we prepared to vote is, what exactly do these congregational delegates do? And we're preparing a list of their essential duties, and they include informing local congregations of the topics that are being considered and discerned by the General Assembly. Your congregational delegate will be the conduit through which you could maybe suggest various items that would get onto the docket for these annual and triennial meetings, ensuring that the General Board and the General Assembly are hearing about the local topics that are concerning to you in, in your local communities and the work that you're doing in your congregations and various ministries that, that serve throughout the life of the Church. Most importantly, connecting our congregations with the General Church and make facilitating opportunities for this listen, learning, and listening, learning, and discerning, collaborating with other congregational delegates. As you hear of good ideas, it puts us in closer, closer proximity and regular dialogue so that if you hear a good idea, you can both learn from one another and absolutely collaborate to make a good idea even better. And then when it's necessary to vote on resolutions, statements of witness, and other business items that are presented to the General Assembly.
Okay, so I know, oh.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right, that's okay, Terry. I'm just excited because I know many are asking, what does it take to become a delegate? So the answer is very easy. If you are a member of a local congregation, the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in the United States and Canada, you can be a delegate. Now, we're going to go more in detail involving the desired qualifications. We ask, it would be helpful if you're active in your ministry of the congregation, that you are capable to be a leader in the congregation, you're familiar with the interest of the wider Church, you're interested in discussions that often happen at General Assembly, you're committed to attend the General Assembly sessions, whether it will be digitally and or in person, and be willing to serve three consecutive years in this role, care and excitement for what we do together as disciples. And I would say that the last one is really the most important one. If you care about being a disciple, you're excited about the work that we all do, then you're on the right track of becoming a congregational delegate. The role of the congregational delegate is to the General Assembly, the role is a congregational delegate to the General Assembly of the Christian Church Disciples of Christ in the United States and Canada. Again, it's volunteer, three-year term. The amount of time is approximately three hours per month, and that's, that's average. We're saying it's probably about sixty percent of the time is spent leading up to or digitally attending and or debriefing meetings of the General Assembly. So out of the year, I guess we're looking at approximately a six to eight week timeline. Congregations can choose any method for selecting delegates. Below are suggested processes that congregations could use. The congregation, it could be an election by the congregation to using regular officer election process as you currently doing in your congregations. Congregations could nominate and elect one delegate each year alongside its full slate of officers. Appointment by a congregational governing body or the governing body of the congregation could elect a delegate. And finally, selection by constituent groups. The congregation could designate a delegate to be selected by a particular constituent, whether it's women, men, youth, or et cetera.
And now we're going to talk a little about the changes to the General Board. And remember, I said that the General Board is defined in the, in the design as a smaller, more deliberative body that's charged with doing work on behalf of the General Assembly. In GA 2343, the, the changes that were made include a slight tweaking of those responsibilities, receiving missional priorities from congregational representatives who are gathering for dialogue and discernment through more frequent General Assemblies. And the General Board will also act on behalf of the Church in terms of making statements of social witness, following the Church's engagement at General Assemblies, establishing mission priorities, acting on policies and procedures as needed, ensuring that we do the diligence required to maintain our 501(c)(3) status, recommending changes to the Design, and even approving regional boundary changes. Stewardship is going to become a core responsibility of the General Board, which would regularly evaluate, revise, and improve the church-wide funding system, the system that we currently refer to as the Disciples' Mission Fund, DMF. That is not a new responsibility. It's simply a responsibility that is going to be highlighted and receive greater focus by the, what is now the Mission Finance Committee of the General Board, which will become the Finance Committee. These committees, over the years, have typically met, because the General Board only met once a year, would only meet once a year. The Governance Board and the Finance Committee, Governance Committee rather, and the Finance Committee have been meeting monthly for the past three or four years. The Governance Committee since September of 2019 has been meeting monthly, and as Clyde said earlier, the implementation team is meeting more, more frequently than that. We simply cannot do the important work of the Church by having key committees that only meet once a year. So these are the important changes to their responsibility. Someone wants to ask the question, so what's the purpose of the General Board? What, what does it do anyway? And again, it's that smaller, more deliberative body. So there is an area of accountability. This is the place where our regions and general ministries report, as well as to the General Assembly. It serves as a place to mediate conflict and deal with grievances from throughout the life of the Church, things that might be appealed, that decisions that have been made in a region or with a general ministry. In particular, the Administrative Committee, soon to be the Executive Committee, is the place where the General Board would address that. And looking at changes in regions and boundaries, from time to time, regions have either merged, carved out new boundaries based on particular local density of congregations. Before that, that decision had to go all the way to the General Assembly, and now that will be handled by the General Board. So accountability overall to ourselves in this covenantal relationship that we have across the three expressions of the Church. A vision and direction, education, communication. There will be a mission committee as well as finance committee. The Executive Committee takes on the role of Administrative Committee plus Governance, but a way to really consider together what the priorities of the Church should be as part of our missional witness. And the statements that we continue to make as a Church based on the social witness that we want to have in the world, the General Board will help to guide and deliberate on those matters. Fiscal oversight, audits and inquiries, budgetary procedures. Each general ministry and region is required to submit annually their most recently audited financial statements. We have seen issues with some of our ministries from time to time that has led us to understand how important that kind of oversight actually is. Not fundraising as well as stewardship. Those are really two different things. Mission Finance is charged with really ensuring adequate support for the work of the Church, and it's time that we really take a look at that mission funding system. We all understand that DMF is declining. The question is, is this unified giving system still the best way to resource the work of our Church? And finally, governance and other work groups, policies, how we organize and, and operate ourselves, detailing and making decisions about business that goes not only before the General Board, but before the General Assembly and crafting those agendas, which is something the General Board has always done. So who is there? And this is an important change as well. In today's world, each region and each general ministry sends a delegate, and there are seventeen at-large. Going forward, fifty delegates with voting authority. There will be twenty-one people on the Executive Committee, which is the new name for the Administrative Committee, thirty-one regional ministry representation. They're actually not completely thirty-one folks because some of these regional ministers serve more than one regions, and then the thirteen general ministries as named in the Design. So they will be selected and nominated by, nominated to the General Board and General Assembly by the General Nominating Committee by identifying skills and talents that are needed. And the goal is to maintain representation across the life of the Church and the diversity of the Church to the degree possible. With fifty people, we can pretty much assure that each region will have at least one voting representative. Geography is one dimension of diversity. Identity is another dimension. We need age. We need a skill set. We need lay. We need clergy. We need educational professionals. We need financial professionals. We need fundraisers and organizational development experts. We need a lot of folks. And this fifty number of delegates or voting representatives to the General Board, because they're smaller, they can be more nimble, they can meet more frequently, and they could also do their committee work more easily. They will still be totally accountable to the General Assembly, which itself will be meeting more frequently. So all of these changes are really important, and one of the questions and concerns that had been raised was how did the regional representation still occur with fifty voting representatives plus the presence of the regional ministers? We can pretty much assure that out of fifty folks, we'll be able to ensure that each of our regions has at least one voting delegate there. The recommendations will still come from across the life of the Church. They will still come from our regional ministers. They will still come from leaders in our general ministry. So that feedback is definitely going to be very important. Qualifications for a General Board member, spiritual maturity, oh my goodness, spiritual maturity, with an understanding of disciples' identity, the willingness to be a servant leader, interpersonal skills, strong organization and communication skills, and appreciation for differing opinions, the ability to stay at the table even when we disagree, not coming to the table as a particular delegate of an area or even an interest, but bringing parts of your identity from, I may be from Indiana, but I'm not there for Indiana alone. I'm there with all that I am to ensure that I'm working with others around the table for the good of the whole Church. Digital and financial literacy, a lot of meetings will be happening online. We need folks who are going to be able to participate in committees to review financial statements, et cetera, thinking about the financial stability of the Church. Strategic thinking, ethical and visionary leadership skills. We've got lots of folks who don't work for our regions and general ministries who have these skills and are using them in their other vocational settings. We need just as many lay as we do clergy. The Board needs to be agile and responsive. Our Board members need to be creative, thinking outside the box to solve problems and demonstrating the desire to be a lifelong learner. These changes will not be the last changes that we make. The Church must continue to evolve and grow as it needs to in order to maintain its relevance in the world as we seek to be followers of Jesus Christ. So due diligence, again, to create and collect some input on the criteria. We have Um, we have um been thinking about how we would actually get feedback from across the life of the church as to who these nominated folks would be. And um recommendations from any disciple could be submitted, and there'll be a survey and opportunity to comment. Uh, on this process will be invited from uh regional ministers, general ministries, our executive committee, nominating chair and committee. Um, and so as we move through this process uh of nominating, and this new general board will have to be voted on at the general assembly next year in twenty twenty-five. In order for them to begin their work in January of twenty-six. Um, so there's already a survey that's being crafted to get input from all of these different constituencies and stakeholders. And the important thing to remember is that everyone in the life of the church would be able to put forward names uh to be considered. The idea is that we'd be able to kind of keep uh sort of a database, if you will, of people with different skills. Um, as people put forward names and ideas so that maybe this person isn't selected for the general board, but another general ministry is looking for a similar skill sets. Uh, we can identify people who have a profile that we're looking for. And you can choose whether or not you want uh to have your name or your information um available to others who are looking for those who might be available to serve. So here are uh the assumptions, which are really important, we've talked about these uh at at general board. Um, regional ministers uh will pay their own expenses, they have voice but no vote. General ministry presidents, uh there are thirteen of those, they will pay their own expenses to general board, and they have voice but no vote. Voting delegates, those fifty people that we spoke of, the O G M P will cover those expenses. Fifty delegates have voice and vote. The members of the executive committee, uh it's a subset of the general board, there are twenty-one members. The O G M P will cover their expenses. They all have voice and vote with the exception of the regional ministers who serve on the executive committee. Two of them and the two general ministry uh leaders uh who will serve, who will have voice but no vote on the executive committee. The reason for that is that the executive committee also serves as the board for the office of general minister and president. Um, so want to lay out those assumptions, this is something that we've been working through, who pays for what? Uh, who's in the room, who has voice and vote, and who has voice but no vote? So regional ministers, general ministry folks are still in the room, they pay their own way, they have voice but no vote. Church pays for uh the O G M P rather pays for those fifty delegates. And uh the executive committee, that subset of twenty-one members, uh those pe- people, their expenses are paid. They meet uh slightly ahead of the general board each time. And again, the general board will meet at least twice a year, once in person and the remaining times. If it were need to need, if it were to need to meet more than once other time, uh that would also be a digital meeting. So this future executive committee, I don't know about you, but every time I talk about what we currently call the administrative committee, I always say. The administrative committee, it's like the executive committee of our general board, people understand the notion of what an executive committee is. So the decision was made to just change that name to the executive committee. Um, there are nine voting members on the general board, and then there are nine um nine voting members from the general board rather. Nine additional uh ex officio members, ex officio simply means by virtue of the office or the position that you hold. You can be ex officio with vote, you can be ex officio without vote. So there are two regional ministers on the executive committee who will not have vote. The college regional ministers chooses who those two are. Two general ministry representatives, the cabinet or the council of general ministries chooses who's those, who those folks are, those folks also have no vote. And then the five members uh who are ex officio with vote are the four moderators, the moderator, moderator-elect, first and second vice moderators and the G M P. Those five people are all duly elected officials, duly elected officers of the general assembly, and they each have vote. There are three members of the executive committee without vote, that is the corporate secretary, the treasurer, and the parliamentarian. Corporate secretary and treasurer are staff positions um or or held by staff members in the O G M P. The parliamentarian, um most of you know, our beloved Bill Bailey is a volunteer position, but has no vote on the executive committee. Well, that's it, uh we've got good time for questions here, so I'll I'll turn it over to uh to Clyde to sort of help curate, and Yvonne is looking at the um the questions that we may have in the chat.
We have a number of questions. Um, I'll note that uh the first one comes from uh Jeff Gill, uh will we stick with July? As has been the recent pattern of general gatherings, or is it possible to move back to occasionally October general assemblies? Uh, and I'll note that Rebecca Littlejohn says she was wondering about the same thing. Uh, when, you know, during the year, things will happen. Uh, are we sticking with July, or is it possible to think about October general assemblies?
Um, firm dates haven't been put into place yet, and that'll be some of the work for the twenty twenty-five meeting of of the general board. Um, but given the fact that we will have uh meetings of the general board at least twice a year. The thought is that the in-person meetings would still happen at some point in the summer. But that SaaS force has thought about whether or not the uh online meetings could alternate and be held at different times of the year. Uh, would be interesting to see how many people are really interested to returning to that kind of alternating uh between July and and the fall. Uh, this last general assembly last year, we did get some pushback. Families, given the fact that kids are going back to school even earlier, eve- that late July, August second date. Uh, we did hear from families uh who found that uh difficult when it conflicted with the school schedule. So that is still, uh there haven't been official dates set, but we certainly will make note of of these questions. Uh, the other question here about the um involvement of the regions. Uh, regions are still making their decisions about how they will adjust their regional assemblies to this new three-year model. Some of our regions have annual gatherings. Um, the racial ethnic ministries, Obras, Espana, uh National Convocation and Napad are for now deciding that their next meeting will be in twenty twenty-six from there. Uh, I don't know that each of them has made a decision about whether they'll continue on a biennial session or if they'll adjust. Um, and maybe do something virtual versus uh in person uh when those years happen to fall in the same year. So everybody is still thinking about this and working through it. For some regions, they have an annual gathering and they'll continue to do that. Uh, and others are thinking about whether or not they'll have a uh a biennial gathering. So everyone is still uh within their own local context, uh still making decisions as to how they will adjust. Uh, everyone seems to however like the fact that general assembly will be every three years instead of every two.
Debbie Jensen, uh our next question comes from her, you talk about the board being a smaller deliberative body. How much smaller will it be compared to the current general board?
Yeah. Uh, the current general board has about a hundred and seventeen uh members, and that includes those fifty plus. Um, th- the thing that remains the same are the thirty-one slots for the regions and the thirteen slots for uh general ministry. So what we've done is reduced it only about twenty or thirty people. The voting group of fifty used to be more like seventy. Um, so we've reduced it by about twenty. People have raised questions, well, if you've got a smaller uh number of voting delegates on the general board. And the executive committee is still like twenty-one people, that seems to be a large percentage of the total board to serve there. But that executive committee has the governance function. It is the uh comi- committee on mediation and and counsel. It's sort of the appellate court of the church if if disputes ever arise. And it also serves as the board for the office of general minister and president. And for all those reasons, it was decided that that number needed to remain the same. That said, um, we have made these decisions, but the church remains empowered to make changes. As we move forward, one of the things that we're working on and one of our committee members is helping us uh think about how do we evaluate uh this whole process? And as we move forward, um none of us is under any illusions that this will remain this way forever. Uh, if we're still looking at these same processes in fifty years, shame on us. We have to develop a culture that allows us to discern uh the need for change and respond and make the change uh as we go, and and that's what we hope that we can do by meeting more frequently. By hearing from our congregational representatives who will be able to participate in ways that they haven't been able to participate before. But it's it's quite honestly not as small as we had hoped it would be. The original proposal was to have a lesser number of regional ministers and general ministry uh people at the table. Uh, but with vote, uh and there was opposition to that idea. So as a result, the compromise position is that all the regional ministers and general ministry heads still maintain their ex officio status without vote, but they will be in their room to to speak and and have voice.
Rebecca, Rebecca Littlejohn asks, uh are the members of the nomination committee also board members?
Uh, yes, they are, and not all of them, however. Uh, the general nominating committee is appointed by the general board, but they are not all members of uh the general board. Um, they are, uh how many people are actually there right now, Yvonne? Is it like?
There's eight.
Eight, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they have had discussions about whether or not the number of people on the general nominating committee needs to be expanded. Uh, they have said to the general board and to the administrative committee uh in twenty-three, as we were working on the resolution, that they felt it would actually be easier to select and nominate fifty people than to try to fill in those seventeen at-large spots. Because what they were doing there was sort of a a interesting game of whack-a-mole, right? When you have thirty-one regional representatives, tw- thirteen general ministry representatives. You look to see what has been sent, and then you try to fill in the at-large slots to create greater diversity. Because just having those folks sent does not yield the diversity that you think it would yield in terms of race, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. Um, and so they are working very diligently uh on that general. We have three subcommittees of this implementation team, one is working on general assembly. One is working on the general board, and one is working on communications and all the technology. The general board subcommittee has been working on what's that process going to look like aided by some level of technology so that people can be uh nominated, people can respond and say, I I realize somebody put my name in, but I don't want to be nominated. How we gather information so that the general nominating committee has good information. There will certainly be a vetting process to ensure that those people are in fact connected in the life of the church. Uh, that their regional minister or some clergy, home congregation knows uh who those folks are.
Our next question comes Karen Ball, uh she asked, what is the term length for general board delegates? Is a full new general board elected each time or only a portion at a time?
Uh, the term is six years. Um, and I know that seems like a lot, but in our current world, the term is two years. And in my now seven years as general minister and president, there are people, there's a whole new board that's turned over two or three times. Um, if we have a three-year cycle for general assembly, we want those folks to serve two cycles. Because sometimes the business carries over, and just as you're figuring it out, if it's time for you to go, that's not good for institutional continuity and institutional memory. The plan is, as this new general board is elected, that they would rotate off a third at a time. Uh, so that not everyone rolls off at the same time, and the committee will be coming back when it makes its recommendations as to who this first uh class of general board is under the new rules. They will be taking into account uh how they want uh folks to roll on or off. So there is a staggered approach that's being considered. Um, but the six years is really, uh we're hoping that people can make that kind of commitment in order to have the the longevity and and the institutional memory that they will gather uh and be more effective by doing that.
Well, just want to lift up, it's not necessarily a a question, but two related comments the from Jeff Gill, can't people have an interest? Uh, Rebecca Littlejohn says, yes, the move to all summer had counterintuitive consequences. Um, so just highlighting um camp there, uh some other um Chuck E. Cheese's whack-a-mole, got it, thank you all. Um, that concludes the questions that have been noted in the in the chat. If there are additional questions, please, we we have a few more minutes.
Chuck E. Cheese's man. Well, any other thoughts? So we we have several folks uh on the implementation team who are here. Um, in addition to our moderator, we have Cindy Kim Hanks, our moderator-elect, uh who serves on the uh general board uh subcommittee, and they're the ones working with the general nominating committee on what this process will look like. Um, that team has also held listening sessions with regional ministers and general ministry leaders uh to get their feedback as we're moving along. Uh, Hyatt Allen is working on the general assembly task force. Uh, one of our young adults in the church, I'm trying to see who else I see on the screen. I don't see anyone else is on the um actually on the uh implementation team who's here. See if hello to some of our uh regional ministers, and I see several general ministry staff members uh who are here.
There's uh additional questions now, Terry. Uh, Karen Ball asks, will the September town hall be a repeat of the same content or a different update?
Uh, it will be a repeat uh of this content. Um, one of the things that we hope that you will do is um take a look at the website. Uh, we're still calling this the covenant project, even though we talk about GA twenty-three forty-three. We are trying to keep an updated uh list of the questions that have been asked with the answers. After um these committees make their uh report to the um administrative committee the end of October, beginning of November, and as we prepare uh to actually take a a written resolution to the general assembly, and that written resolution will include the um new standing rules, proposed standing rules for the general board and the general assembly, all the fun stuff. Um, that guides us in terms of how we actually do some of these things. We anticipate that there will be additional um town halls held either for the remainder of the summer, if we see more demand for that, we will do it. But as we're, we wanted to share uh as we're moving along. Um, the committee will be working and and sometime in September, getting ready to kind of come up with some drafts of these standing. Well, they're actually working on them now, but we're planning to prepare uh those drafts for review by the administrative committee. And then at the beginning of the year, hopefully having some more uh town halls as we move into general board. And then certainly, as we come out of general board, having had conversations, um moving into general assembly. Uh, we'll we'll hit the pedal pretty hard again. Uh, last year, we did between July of twenty-two and general assembly twenty-three, we did over thirty uh town hall sessions. Uh, so we wanted you to see what the concepts are. Uh, what remains now is to codify how these things will work. Um, and that that's work that uh you can't write by committee. Uh, but we want you to understand the concepts, and if you have any questions or concerns, uh questions that that may have eluded us. Um, fresh eyes on things are always good. Um, so there is still the email address. Um, Yvonne, if you want to share that again.
Sure, sure, and I was gonna say, there's there's a few more additional questions now. Uh, also, how does this maintain, Rebecca Hill asks, how does this maintain or increase accountability? Or in with general ministry, general ministry.
And then I think, yeah, one of the important things is it puts, uh it gives greater opportunity for uh the whole church uh to participate both at the general board level and at the uh general assembly level. Uh, currently, you only see, you might see a written report on a docket, but you don't get to engage with uh general ministry heads if you're not at general assembly. And we know that there are only about three thousand people that can attend that. If we have an order of magnitude greater, uh hearing what a general ministry might have to say. And and the hope is, and we've been talking with the cabinet about this, the hope is that we're not just talking about a twelve-minute report. That because the general assembly is meeting every year, that some of those sessions, some of that time could be used by allowing general ministries more uh quality time to share ideas, to hear from the church at large, greater access for all of our ministries to that broader uh group. And again, not just the general board or even just those voting representatives of the general assembly. But everyone, uh just as we have non-voting folks who are in the hall at general assembly, if people are online. Uh, members of our congregation sitting there with their friends and colleagues, hearing information. Uh, we've talked about giving general ministries and regions opportunities uh to be on the agenda on some of these assemblies to do educational work, that one of the assembly sessions is a is a webinar or a Q and A session. Uh, other opportunities for our general ministry. Uh, other opportunities for our general ministries to have access to the whole church besides uh twelve minutes at General Assembly. Uh, and just those reports that they give in small group at general board. So I I think uh creativity can abound here and we just have a lot of uh different options uh to consider. And uh many members of the cabinet seem to be really excited about the idea of having more time in front of the church uh other than just those, again, those twelve-minute uh reports.
Two more questions. Uh, one, I saw it says regions are paying their expenses to attend meetings. Is that how it used to be? Uh, are regions capable of shouldering that burden uh if they haven't before?
Uh, two, two ans- two pieces of that answer. Um, the, since my tenure as general minister and president, um, the O G M P has always asked that regions and general ministries who can uh pay for both themselves and their representative to attend general board that they begin to do so. And um some regions are able to do that and some haven't. Um, some general ministries, many of them actually are able to do that and have begun to do so. The general board at its meeting last April passed a new policy uh that kind of codified uh this policy uh in light of these changes, that regions will pay for their regional minister to attend. But the money that you would have spent to send a regional um ministry delegate, uh, that is, that is still the representative uh responsibility of the Office of General Minister, uh, General Minister and President. Um, so it's somewhat new, but it's just been codified. Um, we have a real challenge. Uh, our general board meetings, uh, the last one in April cost us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that's probably fifty percent more than what it cost us pre-COVID. Uh, my office is not uh resourced uh to handle e- even that meeting. That takes a huge chunk out of uh our operational budget. And um the College of Regional Ministers has its own travel pool scenario. So as they pay dues into that system, the regions that are smaller with less resource are supported uh in their travel uh to general board. And the college has been having that particular conversation. What I've heard from the general ministry units is that for the most part, they will be able uh to and have many of them already been paying their own way and paying for uh their representatives. So this was something that was uh discussed and passed at the last general board meeting for uh attendance at general board.
Our last two questions, multiple of time, um, Alan Smith has some questions with regard to regions. So he says, well, we could plan general assemblies and how they will fit uh within um annual gatherings of GA online or otherwise will meet, um, so we can plan uh our gatherings in person appropriately. Um, and then he also uh asked, will the reasons have input into the nominating process for general board? Or will they just be used for vetting?
Sure. Um, a- and we've already had some conversations. Let me answer the second question first. We've already had uh conversations with our regional ministers and we'll have more uh and with the general ministries about how we do this nominating process for general board. But the idea is that all of our general and regional ministries, in fact, people across the whole life of the church will be able to submit names and and be able to nominate uh people to be considered and certainly be used for vetting as well. So the answer to that question is yes. Um, we're hoping to come up with a calendar uh fairly soon so that when we get to uh general assembly, you'll have a set of dates leading out into twenty-six and twenty-seven where we will know for the most part when the triennial uh sessions will be held. And uh and that will hopefully give regions uh some of the uh important information they need to know to begin to plan uh regional assemblies in and around. Uh, the college regional ministers just talked about this briefly uh at their meeting a week before last. Uh, and it's certainly on on their radar screen. And again, because they all have different uh habits in terms of how frequently they meet, they're all addressing it in different ways. But we certainly want to hear from all of our regional ministers and we want to hear from all of our general ministry presidents as we nominate people to serve uh on uh the general board. But we do need more than just the current moderator of those boards uh to be considered. Uh, different skill sets, a wide diversity of experiences that we want to have uh as we move from being just a representative board to really a governing and a working board.
That concludes the questions.
Yvonne, I would just like to just ask a question for the group. Uh, um, is there anything that you heard from this evening's presentation that um gives you pause or um some anxiety about the changes that's coming forth? Just trying to do an overall pulse check of of the uh group on this evening.
Yeah.
Place those things in the chat.
If if you think we're, now, now bear in mind, what we're talking about here is how this all gets implemented. And the General Assembly has voted on these changes. There may be some recommendations that the implementation team makes. Um, as we said last year at General Assembly, as we're thinking about the implementation, there may be other changes either to the design or some other things that we think we need to address. And the implementation committee team will come back with those recommendations um as well. And and hopefully we can instill uh a new culture of of continued improvement and change. What Kentey Garden called Continued Renewal and Structural Reform. And he talked about continuing to um renew our covenantal relationships and and living into who we needed to be. And that's, that's really the spirit with which we're doing this work. Not that this would be settled or that we have all the answers, that everything is even perfect, but that we walk into this uh process with hope, with our eyes wide open and ready to say, ah, that didn't work. Let's change that. Um, and and be open and honest with each other about when those things are happening or not happening the way we had hoped. So. I would imagine that fifty years from now, this might look nothing like this does now, and that would be okay. Ah, the the Bonnie Schuler, hi Bonnie. Uh, congregational reps, is it one per congregation for three years or three per congregation? It is three per congregation. And you can decide how you want to bring those people on or off, uh, rotate them as you will, but each congregation at any one time can have three voting representatives. Delegates, we're trying to use the word delegates, I should use.
And all clergy withstanding are also voting delegates still?
Yes, yes, that did not change. All clergy withstanding remain voting delegates to the General Assembly. And the regions will still have regional delegates to the General Assembly as well. I'm seeing Jeff's point. It's like, you know, if if congregations choose not to participate, that's kind of what happens today. Not everybody is uh sends uh their representatives to the General Assembly. And in some cases, that is because um of finances, right? It's it's becoming harder and harder for people to participate in General Assembly. And so if this is the primary way in which we get feedback from our church, it becomes even more important to create opportunities for everyone uh to participate. And um I've seen people um be concerned about, oh, I I don't have, I'm not good with technology. How much will I participate in the online uh sessions? And we're trying to lift up this idea of having these communal gatherings uh across our regions where churches that do have the facilities and the technology could host them sort of in mini-regional and you've got microphones there and the technology that we use to vote is still there. And that can certainly um do a lot of things in terms of regional community and and connectedness, but also a sway some of the concerns that people might have about, oh, how do I get online? How do I participate? Um, we imagine these communal gatherings and we imagine volunteerism across the life of the regions to make these things happen. Um, there are folks who can't sing in the choir or they want to be an elder or deacon, but maybe, man, they know about Wi-Fi and can can set up a camera and a microphone and can do all those things. Um, that we need to be looking for those folks now and letting them know that the opportunities to serve the church have just increased and we and we need them um to share in this work together. Uh, yes, we uh we were about five minutes. Do you have a couple of minutes to watch something uh that uh was just developed? One of the suggestions that we had last summer was that we needed something like Schoolhouse Rock uh to kind of explain the changes. So this is more Hamilton than it is Schoolhouse Rock. If you grew up with Schoolhouse Rock or if you've had any exposure to Hamilton a- and rap i- in hip-hop. So uh with great thanks to Reverend Wesley King, who works in New Church Ministry. Uh, we thought we'd like to debut this tonight. And uh, there's a lot of humor going on in the chat there. Um, we thought we'd debut this tonight. Share with us. I'm always like, don't feel like you have to keep your ideas and opinions to yourself. None of you are shy. Disciples are not shy people. Uh, if you think this is, you know, just let us know how it hits you. It might not be everybody's cup of tea, but let us know uh what you think about it. Uh, we are certainly tossing it back and forth amongst uh the committees. But uh, we thought it was kind of fun and certainly something different. So I'll I'll hand it off to the team to to debut this little, uh, I don't know what we're calling it yet, but.
GA twenty-three forty-three implementation video.
Yeah.
So catchy.
I can't get that below. Okay, here we go.
Y'all gather round and hear the news. If it changes here, you better tie your shoes. Generalists have got a brand-new beat. Every three years, we're gonna meet and greet. 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 Every three years! With the disciples of Christ, with a vision so bright, adapting our ways to lead with insight. From data to decisions and faith, we unite with the disciples of Christ, shining God's light. We got digital meetings happening every year, bringing us together both far and near. Three votes, a congregation, that's the deal. Fifty board members gonna be steering the wheel. 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 They're steering the wheel! With the disciples of Christ, with a vision so bright, adapting our ways to lead with insight. From data to decisions and faith, we unite with the disciples of Christ, shining God's light. All right, we've come to the bridge and I want you to sing it with me. I'll do it first. Do it like this. Executive, mission, finance, and line, committee so strong, their purpose defined. Governance programs with funds will align for a church that thrives through the power of the divine. You got it? All right, we're gonna do it together. Five, six, five, six, seven. Executive, mission, finance, and line, committee so strong, their purpose defined. Governance programs with funds will align for a church that thrives through the power of the divine. With the disciples of Christ, with a vision so bright, adapting our ways to lead with insight. From data to decisions and faith, we unite with the disciples of Christ, shining God's light. So let's march forward with heart so bold. So let's march forward with heart so bold. Christ loves joy forever told. Christ loves joy forever told. Embrace the change of Jesus' soul. Embrace the day of Jesus' soul. disciples of Christ, both young and old. Let's march forward, young and old.
And there you have it.
I think Rebecca loved it.
I saw Rebecca jamming out there.
Yes, yes.
I didn't actually hear the words because I was dancing, so that might be something you want to take into consideration, but A-plus.
It will be posted online tomorrow. Special thanks to our Director of Communications, Vanji Bird.
Yes, yes.
Putting it together. Uh, you can begin sharing it tomorrow, uh, when it comes out in DNS and online.
His account can create Energizer. Yes, yes. Somebody asked if we can have a live band doing this at GA twenty-five. We're gonna work on that, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all so much uh for your time. And um I think covenant@disciples.org is an email address that you can use. Uh, if you have questions or feedback or thoughts about this process that you want to get to the implementation team. Again, covenant@disciples.org is the feedback email. And uh, tell folks that there is one, there's one more in September. We will probably add some dates before the end of the year, definitely will, but um subscribe to Disciples News Service if you're not already subscribing. Take care, everyone. Good night.